All right, we are here to call to order the pre-meeting of the West Jordan Planning Commission for July eighteenth, twenty twenty-three. All commissioners are present, save for Commissioner Quinney, who is excused. Going over the pre-meeting agenda, just review what we've got. First is the approval of minutes. Does anybody have any questions, comments, considerations for the minutes? Okay. We're way off. It's been too long since we last met. Is there training today? All right, there is training today. Oh, it's the thing underneath all of the other papers I brought. Okay. Thank you. Before we get to the training, just do we want to, how long are you going to take for the train?
Fifteen to twenty minutes, but I'm flexible. I can adapt to whatever you need to do.
Okay, I would say there's enough going on with both of the public hearings. Sorry, all three of the public hearings, four of the public hearings. It'd be nice to just run through them quickly. And have a brief conversations, maybe two or so minutes apiece. If that's what, is everybody else on board with that? Okay. So let's start with the Kerns Improvement District. Megan, welcome. It's been a while since we saw you here.
Yeah, so. If I can just show this. Um yeah, so the Kerns Improvement District, this is just at the intersection of fifty-six hundred west and seven thousand south. They just are putting up a communications pole to read water meters. It's going to be fifty feet high. There is this kind of shed here and they're just proposing to put it right behind it. It's fifty feet tall. The nearest residence is about fifty-six feet away. Yeah, are there any questions?
Have any question for staff? Good.
I know there's some power lines in that area. Do you know how tall they are? Just for comparison sake.
I do not know how tall they are. About fifty feet.
Thank you.
Commissioner.
I see. Is that what I, oh, okay, I'm on. I forgot. The residents that they're closest, you say it's fifty-six feet away, but you're talking about the house, not the land, obviously.
Yes.
Have they been contacted?
Um, yes.
And what did they say?
Um, I haven't heard anything from any residents.
Nobody's complained about it or said anything about it.
I personally haven't heard anything.
And they may show up today. So they were all noticed. This was a public meeting. This particular item would show up.
Okay, that's right. I want to know, I know it's to aid in data, you know, for meter reading. Doesn't have any other, I mean. Okay, once there's detection of a leak, what's the process? Do you know?
Um, I do not know. We have the applicant here and he can.
Yeah, I think that's probably a good question for the meeting.
Yeah, I think that, you know, I think that Megan might know anything about their process. He's just processing the application for the pool.
And those residents are not city of West Jordan residences, are they? That's my thought. Thank you.
For the record, they are residents of West Jordan. They're, they are serviced though by the Kerns Improvement District. Okay, number three, Taylor. Want to just give us a heads up on this agenda item?
Uh, yeah, item two or three, depending on how we're looking at it. There's a preliminary subdivision and site plan for come and go. So it's a property that's currently zoned SC one. They're just dividing that into two lots. There's minimum lot size of one acre there. And then the bigger lot of the two will have a come and go gas station. It's across the street from Copper Hills High School. It will have access on to the eighty-six hundred flyover. Talking to the applicant, they're not going to start construction until that road's open, so.
We're out of ways then. Well, let me, this was, I've got two questions. Maybe those come up in the meeting as well. One is if you're not going to start until the flyover is done or the road is open. How long are we waiting? And does that meet the, the conditions of requirement or usually put it's valid for a year?
Yeah, I would expect that would be open within that year. I drive past it every day. There's tremendous progress being made weekly. Yes, also, that's a good point from Larry. This is preliminary approval, so they'll still have to get final approval through staff.
Right.
Final approval's two years.
Perfect. That helps. The other question I had regarding that is, we'll come up with especially the public hearing portion of it before we did get the comment. Was this always zoned with the SC one? When I say always, since that subdivision went in?
It's been that way for a long time. I don't know exactly when that subdivision went in, but.
So I did the rezone probably in two thousand thirteen or fourteen when I got here and when Perry Holmes did that. It was, it always was on the general land use map as a commercial corner. And then it was on the SC one along with the R one eight of Copper Valley Estates. So it's been that way for eight, nine years. But it has been on the future land use map as commercial for, at least on the two thousand twelve future land use map. So I think it was years beyond that, too.
Any other questions for staff? Commissioner Richardson?
Yeah, I just had a question. What does flyover mean? Is it, is it a walkway bridge? Or is, is it actually a, a street that's going to go over the road?
It'll be a full road that'll go over Mountain View Corridor.
It will go over Mountain View Corridor.
If you drive out there right now, you can see them. They're starting to build on both sides, so.
Okay, okay, thank you.
All right, agenda item for the Woods Ranch, Ray.
Thank you. Here I am.
Good to see you here.
So this is the Wood Ranch. You'll be seeing a lot of these coming throughs. Where we took a look at that, at phase one, a little while ago. Now, this is the preliminary approval for phase two, which is basically all residential. And then it's, it's that, the bistro area that's to the north. Also, they, just as a, a change to the original preliminary development plan that was approved. One of the things we're looking at is actually moving the pool further south than the normal wood property, just so there's not as much congestion between the, the community center and the pool area itself. So there's not as much parking on the, the streets for those uses. So we think it's a, a good move and that'll be explained tonight. So that's really plot two kind of surrounds that. It's not a budding U one eleven. This is still interior, but it just kind of surrounds that initial, that initial phase one. So really, we're just looking for approval of that plus the preliminary, the sub-area plan.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? All right, and then agenda item five, just want to give us a brief synopsis of that one to the Villas of Stone Creek.
Yeah, the Villas of Stone Creek, this is another one that you've seen before, when it came through for the, the future land use map. Nothing has really changed on that. It's in for the preliminary site plan, preliminary subdivision. And then the amended development plan. Plus, there's a little road closure that has to happen. That just can't figure out why it was initially plotted, but it was for the eventual use of the roadway to serve that property, but it just never did happen, so. So that's what's on the table for, for tonight.
Any questions on that one? Commissioner Hatch?
I just have a bizarre question. It's really called a road vacation?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. I like that. Works for me.
All right, that is it for the agenda. So Duncan, all yours.
Great. All right, so I handed down a one-page sheet of paper that, for you to follow along with what we're going to talk about today. Also, I think Julie can put that up on the screen for the audience probably, right? Maybe not. But tonight we're going to talk about exactions. So. You know, exaction is one of those terms and it sounds more mysterious and ethereal than it is, right? It's really a basic, basic concept. And according to case law, it's basically, it's a contribution to a group, a government entity imposed as a condition precedent to approving the developer's project. So basically, application comes in. We may not be able to specifically point chapter and verse to the city code or other regulations that it's required, but we know intuitively it's required. We need it to make the project work. And so we're asking the developer to put whatever that is, right, a street, a water line, a walkway, whatever it is. And so then the question becomes, is it a legal exaction or an illegal exaction, right? Because it's legal, it's not a problem, right? And so there was a Supreme Court case, Nolan, there was another one called Dolan. We're going to talk about Nolan here in a minute, US Supreme Court case. But basically, this Utah legislature put it right into state law for us. And that's, it's ten nine eight five oh eight, and you've got the verbiage over there. It's basically a two-part, a two-pronged test. If you meet the two prongs, it's legal. If you don't meet the two prongs, it's not legal, right? And they're pretty simple. On, if you don't meet them, both prongs, then it's, we've heard the other term that also sounds mysterious, but it's really not a constitutional taking, right? And that's a lot of times because we didn't meet this two-part test. So the first prong of the two-part test is, is there an essential link that exists between a legitimate government interest and the exaction? So does the government really have the need, the bona fide interest to do something? And does it have something to do with what the developer's trying to do, right? That's the easiest prong to meet. But then the second one is each exaction has to be roughly proportionate, both in nature and extent to the impact of the proposed development. So it's got to kind of relate, right? So if, if you have a regular sixty-foot residential road and somebody wants to put a, a small convenience store on the corner and your transportation master plan says that's going to be a hundred and ten-foot arterial, we can't make this little convenience store widen the road, from a regular road to a really wide road, because they're not likely to have many customers, right? If it's just a small convenience store. However, if somebody puts in a full-fledged box store, you know, like a Walmart with all kinds of other stores around it, it's highly likely that you could show the proportionality that that does now need to be a full-fledged arterial and they do need to pay for their, and build the, along their frontage, the wider road. Because there might be that impact that you can show, right? With hundreds of cars, hundreds and hundreds of cars every day, you need the additional lanes. It's proportionate. It makes sense. So that's the kind of thing we're talking about with this two-part test. And so the, this Nolan case came out of California. And basically, the fact pattern there, which of course, that's the genesis of what led to this, that's in our state code, even though it happened in California, was there was this governmental entity that the California legislature set up called the California Coastal Commission. And they basically dealt with issues all along the entire, or most of the coastline of California. And in this one situation, somebody that owned land, and of course, I think for the most part, the beach is owned by the state, right? But, but the areas right back behind the immediate beach area are owned by, in large part, by private property owners. And so a lot of times you'll have a street that's a public street, then you'll have a line or two of houses, and then you'll have the beach, right? And, and so obviously, people want to get from that main street to the beach. And they can't just cross private property and there's only so many accesses that are public. And so the, the commission adopted a rule that if you wanted to redevelop your property and, you know, put more or increase the built, the building footprint of your house, or if you wanted to build a house on a otherwise not previously developed lot or whatever, then you would have to provide access from the main street to the beach. And so this one property owner, they have a small bungalow, one-bedroom bungalow, and they wanted to tear it down, turn it into a three-bedroom house, right? And so the coastal commission says, oh, well, you've got to, according to this rule we've adopted, you've got to provide a public pathway from the road to the beach. And I can't, I don't know if it was an easement all the way across or they had to dedicate it to the government to basically give up this access. And they're like, oh, wait a minute. We're just going from like a one-bedroom house to a three-bedroom house. I mean, granted, we are obscuring some of the site, you know, the view from the main street to the beach. But that's all we're doing. I'm just impeding a little bit of somebody's view. We shouldn't have to. It seems a little unfair that we should have to give up this, you know, dedicate this or provide this easement of this strip of land, access to the beach. And so, of course, they litigated it all the way up to the US Supreme Court and probably the cost of the case were ten times what the property was worth, if not more. But ultimately, they prevailed, right? And so. And the, this is where the two-pronged test came from, which is now codified in our state code. But they basically came up with this two-part test and then, of course, it, this particular case, that it was the Supreme Court ruled in favor of the property owner, because that definitely was not roughly proportionate, right? I mean, it's like they just want to make this little change. And yet then the government was asking for a, you know, a massive change or dedication in return. And even though it wasn't part of the decision or ruling of the Supreme Court, they, and the dicta, that's the part of the ruling that's, hey, here's kind of the stuff that maybe we would or wouldn't do if such and such a thing happened. That's not binding, but it's still interesting. But they basically said, hey, you know, if coastal commission, if you just would have required a small viewing station, you know, just a little area where people can walk up and look through at the beach, they probably would have upheld that, right? Small change, small something in return seems to make sense, right? As opposed to somebody putting in a big development that's, you know, with fifty or a hundred units. Maybe at that point, it makes sense that they dedicate an access to the beach, right? In this instance, maybe it's just a little view station that's four by four feet and you can stand in it and look at the beach if you want. And so that's, that's how that all started and we came up with what's in our code. So another example you've heard me talk about before is when I was working in Perry City. We had a, a main street, kind of a collector. A lot of traffic on it. It's probably the second biggest north-south street in the city. And there was a little rural lane coming off it to the west. And by rural lane, what I'm talking about is it's like a twenty, twenty-five foot wide piece of asphalt. And there's like no curb gutter, anything on the side, right? It's just weeds or something on the side. And, which was perfectly fine. It was, you know, three or four or five houses on each side of the street, stretched out over a long distance. Each, most of them were built thirty to sixty years before, you know, that, that kind of thing. And, and nobody had come in for a subdivision. There was no need to have curb gutter sidewalk up to full city standards. So, but at one point, a church came in and it was kind of four congregations in one bigger church. And they were about three hundred feet off the main road. And there were none of these houses in between, right? And so the thought came up, well, wait a minute. Now, this little rural lane isn't going to handle the pedestrian traffic or the car traffic, especially when people are on Sunday or once a week during the week, other activities going on. There's no way all that traffic could fit on their road safely with pedestrians with nowhere for them to walk and so forth. And, and so that was brought, and so we thought about this whole exaction analysis even back then. And, you know, we wanted to make sure we didn't require more than what was needed, right? Because that's mainly what the, this exaction test is all about, is not requiring more. If something less egregious works, then that's probably what we got to do, right? So I immediately started thinking along with the planning commission and, and others, you know, what, what is the, you know, least egregious? Is it just like a four-foot wide, you know, few inches thick bunch of road base and gravel on the top from the three hundred feet from the church to the main street? A little bit off the roadway, people can safely walk? Does that work? Yeah. And I think that probably would have been accepted. In this instance, however, and we have to be careful how we say this, because voluntary has to be truly voluntary, right? We're going to talk about some principles in a minute. And voluntary can't be like where you twisted their art, right? And then they volunteer. No, it's got to be true voluntary. Well, I didn't even come up, or nobody at the city even came up with the idea of, hey, why don't you just do curb gutter and sidewalk and a few extra feet of asphalt and you just put it in the whole three hundred feet from the church to the main street? Because of course, they were going to do that in front of the church, but. But they on their own came up with the idea and did it, which was like the Taj Mahal perfect version, right? Now, would we have ever required those to city? No way. Because I just don't think that would have passed the, the test, right? It's not roughly proportionate. It's like extra three hundred feet. I think their frontage was only, well, it was way less than that, right? And so, at any rate, some of the people at the city caught some guff from it. Why are you making this church do that? It's like, we didn't make them do it. We said the, you know, a few inches thick of road base gravel is perfectly fine, but they want the extra mile and chose to do this. But it was an interesting process to go through, right? The ideal versus what's proportionate is the word we use nowadays. What's their proportionate share? What's their amount that they need to put in that, that's on their shoulders, so to speak? So. So then the, the last example I'm going to talk about and we'll have time for questions hopefully and some principles. But is there was a recent Utah Ombudsman Advisory Opinion number two sixty-four. Most of you, I think you're aware of these ombudsman decisions, but it's a special office, the property rights ombudsman set up in Utah that kind of negotiates disputes or at least answers questions of law that arise between cities or other governmental entities on one side and landowners on the other side. And either the, either a governmental entity or a landowner can raise the issue. It can either be a negotiation or a lot of times it's just a request for a legal opinion. Hey, Mr. Ombudsman or some attorney in your office, tell us what the law is with this fact pattern. And what, and this fact pattern was in Spanish Fork. It came up with a stub street. It was a small subdivision. They only wanted to add six or seven more lots, if I remember correctly, in this one phase. They optimally wanted seven. And there are two ways they could do it, if I remember correctly, and, and under the Spanish Fork code. One was to do the, a traditional Euclidean regular subdivision, kind of like RR one-ten or something like that. And they could do seven lots, but there's something, I can't remember what, but that wasn't allowed by that zone that they wanted to do. So there was this alternative zone called the MDP zone, master development plans zone or option that said, but they could only have six lots. There was some ability probably with a master development agreement to maybe go seven. They didn't, it doesn't appear that they talked about it in MDA. I don't know why, but that's another principle we'll talk about in a second. But they basically said, hey, you know, you can, you can do your regular zone, seven lots, or, you know, we'll let you do this MVP option. And we'll give you seven, but you need to dedicate a stub street, because we want a stub street to the north, even though it's just open fields. We know there'll be development there eventually. You need to dedicate this stub street and then we'll give it to you. Well, that was their preferred option and they felt like they were being strong-armed. They felt like they weren't giving the full-fledged choice. They felt like they were being forced into a stub road, which wasn't caused by their development. It was only for future development. Wasn't needed right away, wasn't likely to be used for a long time. And it went to the ombudsman and the city of Spanish Fork lost. And the reason they lost is, you know, there's some things people might agree with or not agree with. But you can see I pulled the one sentence out of the ombudsman's opinion. It said, making the stub street a condition precedent, basically saying you have to do this, would constitute an unconstitutional taking. I think part of it is how they phrased it. If it truly, if you're truly providing what's normally let out and then you're just providing extra option and you frame it properly, it's not a taking. I, I, I almost wonder if, if the city just would have said, hey, here's two options that are in our code. You can do seven in the regular zone. You can do six in the MP and DP zone. Just, those are the two things you can just do. You can just file the application and just do it. But, you know, we'll throw a third option on the table and it's just an option. It's the third option. If you want to negotiate with us, the code allows us to do an MDP. And in return for you putting in a stub street, we'll allow you seven lots instead of six. Totally your choice. Don't have to choose that option. You can still do the regular MDP and get six. Or you can still do the reg, the regular zone, do seven. This is just an extra option, but they didn't frame it that way. They said, if you do the MDP, you must do a stub street and you, and gets, to get your seven lots. Which to me is interesting little nuance that they almost sound like exactly the same thing. And yet one's a constitutional taking and the other isn't. Because it's almost like they took option two off the table and replaced it with three. So you can choose one or three, but not two. It's like, why can't we choose two? Two is, I can choose as a matter of right. I can do an MDP with six lots if I want. I don't need your permission. I can just file the application and do it. But it almost was like the way they framed it, they were taking away an automatic right and replacing it with something else. Instead of providing an option with an MDP or with an MDA, because that's, you can always do an MDA, right? It's as long as it's legal and it meets your requirements and you're not using it to bypass your code. If you're giving something in return for something else and it's optional and you're not strong-army, right? Any questions you guys have on these fact patterns, including this one, Spanish Fork? Okay, so last thing, just super quick, because I know we're almost out of time, is those principles on the bottom. So I've talked about them as we've gone through a little bit, but the first principle there is cities can't just make up rules, right? You've got to point to where it is in your code. Or come up with an optional, they don't have to choose it, but optional MDA situation where they can choose that. But you can't strong-arm them. It has to be truly voluntary. And a best practice, the second principle there, our best practice is refer to numerical standards that are in the city code. Especially if those standards are based on studies. And, and what I mean by that is we have one place in our city code that says, if somebody's putting in a development and it causes us to not be able to make our fire response times, then, and there's specific number of minutes. I don't know if it's five minutes or whatever here or there. But if we can show, look, we already have five-minute response time, but if you have this road going this way and you don't connect it in here, now we're going to have six or seven-minute response times. We can't get there. We have a study and we're guaranteeing our code these five-minute response times. Then the backup we have is a study, the code, it's public safety related. It's numerical. We can calculate it and it's like check, check, check. We win, right? If that goes to any court and you've done it properly, we win. And even this ombudsman decision says that if you do those types of things, then you set yourself up to win. Then that next principle is if a stub street or other exaction is voluntarily provided in return for density or whatever in an MDA, then it's legal, right? As long as you get that all in an MDA, that becomes legal. And. And like I say, the whole thing is to make it be, that last principle, make it be an additional option. Don't take away the regular options. Just add that as an addition. Make it be an additional option. Don't take away the regular options. Just add that as an additional option. Um, and then usually you're in good shape, but just wanted to throw that out there. That's all I have unless you have any questions.
Any questions, Duncan? All right, okay. Appreciate the training. Unfortunately, I don't think we get a break. Time to move right in, so. We'll call to order the July eighteenth, twenty twenty-three um, planning commission meeting for West Jordan City. All commissioners are present, save for Commissioner Quinney, who is excused today. Running right in the calendar, uh, agenda item number one, approve the minutes from June sixth. Any discussion or emotion? Commissioner Thomas?
I'll make a motion that we accept minutes.
Commissioner Shelton?
I second the motion.
Hey, we've got a motion from Commissioner Thomas, second by Commissioner Shelton, all in favor. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Uh, moving on, the next three agenda items are all public hearings with final action from the planning commission. And so I wanna share uh, with this, what we're going to do is first invite the applicant to come up and address us, uh, share the the background on the item. The commission will be able to ask a handful of questions. We'll then have staff address the item, staff or uh, the the commission can ask questions there. At which point the public hearing will uh, be open. The we'll hear from the public, uh, and that'll proceed one at a time. So uh, on the agenda item number two, the Kerns Improvement District Communications Pole is located at fifty-five ninety west, seven thousand south, a conditional use permit for a fifty foot tall communications pole in R one six A zone with Kerns Improvement District, Greg Anderson, the applicant. Uh, Greg, are you? All right, please come up, uh, state your name for the record and uh, give us a rundown on your application.
Thank you very much, James Woodruff. I'm representing Greg Anderson, the general manager with Kerns Improvement District. Uh, Kerns Improvement District provides about thirty-two hundred resident or thirty-two hundred connections in uh, West Jordan City for water and sewer. Um, we are in the process of replacing all the meters um, with a radio read meter that actually can communicate with uh, this technology. Um, our goal is to actually put it on a system, so it's not just a monthly reading, but actually um, a twenty-four hour reading that residents actually can put on an app on their phone and actually monitor their their uh, water. Uh, which is great. It's fantastic. Uh, we we are actually in the process of doing of constructing approximately seven of these uh, poles. These are just communication. They, what they do is they just collect that information and data from each of these meters um, on an ongoing basis. So we had to strategically place them in different locations. We currently have at this site, a well, uh, it's one of our wells that we have. Um, the site itself is on the corner of seventieth and fifty-six. Uh, the closest uh, power pole that's to that is about fifty feet high and those power lines kinda run east to west. Uh, we strategically placed the pole between our building and actually the the resident behind us. I don't know if you could pull up the uh, just the site plan. But uh, there are large trees in the in the cul-de-sac, the home there has a couple of large trees that are located along the back of their property between them and our and our site. And so we we placed it or at least located it uh, in that location that would be a less intrusive, hopefully to the resident in that area. Um, so with that, I'll just open it up if you have any questions that you'd like to ask.
Questions to the applicant, Commissioner Richardson?
Yes. Oh, this is great that it's gonna be easier for data, you know, to collect the wa- read the water meters. And for the applicant, I mean, for the homeowners to uh, to see it too.
Yes.
Um, I'm just concerned, um, when the leak is detected, or if you think a homeowner is using too much water, what's the protocol to uh, you know, that you guys are gonna be taking?
So it won't be any different than it is now. We currently um, whenever there is, you know, right now, we only just do a monthly, so we see if there's an increase in in a water meter uh, usage. We will actually reach out to the resident and talk to them. And usually it's a, it's a visit at their property. If it's a large amount of water, we will, we will actually go knock on their door and and notify them, or we'll reach out to them through the communications that they've given us, whether it's an email or a phone um, to the resident.
So you're currently now?
Yes.
Meter reading?
Well, we we currently meter read, yes, on a monthly basis. We will drive the neighborhood, you know, with a vehicle to collect collect the meter down. This will actually obviously be twenty-four hour data where communication is happening. And so what you can actually do is set up some templates of of um, values and if and if the values exceed a normal like residential reading, then it will trigger and send a message actually to the homeowner. Like if they're on vacation.
Right.
They can actually uh, notify the district, but we also will monitor that too. We can set those uh, standards. So if if there is a a large amount of water that we feel that's that that meter might be uh, producing, then we'll we'll check on that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Is this the same system that West Jordan installed previous last year? So, okay.
I believe so.
All right, so it's already in place in West Jordan. You're just building it out for the Kerns Improvement District?
Yeah, yeah, exactly. We, obviously we have our own water system, um, so there are separate water systems. But we've ac- actually coordinated with uh, West Jordan City on on a lot of the water where those locations are gonna be like Wood Ranch. We're currently providing water and sewer for that development.
Thanks.
Commissioner.
Uh, can you tell me what is currently on that corner? I mean, I guess really what I'm asking is will the pole look like it's, like it belongs there or is it gonna look like a sore thumb?
Yeah, I don't know if you could go to the next. I do have some photos if we wanted to pull up. Um, just just looking at the site, I can, I can just kinda walk you through the site. Basically, there is a small building um, in that upper, on the on my screen that I'm looking at, upper left hand to the to the, to the left. Uh, it's a small uh, well, building and it's only about a uh, twenty by ten. And everything else is landscape, so there's no other physical structures other than there are power poles out on the road and there's also street lights on fifty-six hundred west that are about a thirty-five to forty foot steel pole that's actually out there on that road. So those are the only probably above ground features really that are on that site um, for that.
Um, when you say well, what do you mean by a well?
So this is a well that's that's underground, that actually goes underground and we pull water from from that well and and add it to our water system. So it's a, it's a well underground.
Um, is it a, it would you, you wouldn't call it a reservoir though?
Yeah. Now, reservoir is more of storage. And this well actually has a column of pipe that goes underground and we pull the water from underground.
So it gets, it receives water somehow? And then from there it goes out to the residents?
It pumps from there into our water system, correct.
Okay, and how many of those do we have?
There's just the one on this site right here.
Do you know how many we have in West Jordan? Only five? Is that, is that how the water is distributed mostly used to these kinds of wells?
In Kerns Improvement District, we collect about ninety percent of our water through Jordan Valley. So we're actually just pumping water. They're pumping water to tanks and then we're pumping water, you know, up to upper reservoirs and feeding the city. We have uh, about ten wells in Kerns Improvement District and they're a supplement to really the, to the larger provider of water, which is Jordan Valley.
I'm just concerned, um, you know, because about water, because even though we had such a huge amount of snowpack this year. There's still talk about how we don't have water. Um, so do we have enough wells? Do we have enough reservoirs? Do you believe in in West Jordan or how many reservoirs do we have in West Jordan?
So I may can't answer that. Yeah, let me uh, so it's it's outside of the scope, at least of this particular agenda item. I think it'd be a good idea, maybe just from a uh, one of our trainings, uh, Nate can share with us, just a general overview of our system. I think that'd be a great idea.
Okay. All right, um, I just wanna, I just wanna noted that I'm concerned about these meters. Or do I need to do this at another time? Should I make my comment now or?
The, so the agenda item is specifically about communications pole?
Right.
It really doesn't have anything to do with meters aside from pole.
Right, I understand. I was gonna ask about water. Um, I'm just concerned, I want it noted, that I'm concerned about having this data by the government and the government being able to use it to shut off people's water without their consent. Or if the government decides that we have a crisis and a shortage of water and then they decide, you know, limit water. It it will give the government the ability to do this. And so I'm just very concerned about it. And is that something that, um, we need, we need to be concerned about it? So I'm wary about what about putting up these poles without some kind of safeguard that the government will not have the ability to limit our water or turn off our water. That's it. Thank you.
Okay. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Megan? Care to give us a another synopsis? I think you did a great job. What do you have to add?
Yeah, um, not much. Um, this is just for a conditional use permit um, for the fifty foot communications pole for the Kerns Improvement District. Um, the site is currently used by them. Um, it's in an R one six zone um, which is single family residential. Um, the pole is fifty feet and the nearest residential home would be about fifty-six feet away. Um, the pole is up here in this um, top left corner. Um, there aren't any setback requirements, um, cause it's not walled or roofed structure. Um, and it's not gonna increase traffic at all. Um, yeah, if you have any questions.
Any questions for staff? All right, this has been uh, uh, notified as or advertised, excuse me, as a public hearing. And so we'll turn the time over to the public. Uh, if you're here to speak on this agenda item or online and desire to speak on this agenda item, feel, if you're online, raise your hand. If you're here, feel free to come into the podium. You'll have three minutes to address uh, address this item. All right, seeing none uh, on this particular item, we'll go ahead and close the hearing, bring the item back to the planning commission for further discussion or emotion. Commissioner Hatch?
Unless anyone is opposed, I'd like to make a motion. All right, based on the information and staff analysis and opinions set forth in this, this staff report and upon the evidence and explanations received today, I move that the planning commission approved the conditional use permit for the Kerns Improvement District Communications Pole located at fifty-five ninety west, seven thousand south in the R one six zoning district with the conditions of approval listed on page two of the staff report.
And Commissioner Shelton?
Second.
All right, we've got a motion by Commissioner Hatch, a second by Commissioner Shelton. Uh, any further discussion on the motion? All right, all in favor? I, any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Uh, Megan, thank you for uh, very well reasoned out background memo.
Thank you.
Uh, all right, agenda item number three, we're on to the uh, come and go station at eighty-five fifty-four south, fifty-six hundred west, preliminary subdivision lot or plat, excuse me, two lots and two point four five acres and a preliminary site plan, uh, SC one zone, Galloway and Company, Taylor Smith, the applicant is Taylor here? Please come on up, uh, let us know what you're looking at doing.
Hey, how are you guys doing? I'm Taylor Smith with Galloway Company. We are the civil engineers and survey on this. I'm looking to divide this parcel into two parcels. Um, come and go will be on the south parcel here, um, right on the corner there at the new road you guys are putting in. Um, just kidding, corner of the high school there. And then partially on one acre to sell to another commercial development and um, haven't listed it yet, so not sure, but they would have to go through the same process also. And then working closely with Taylor, I've been great. I'm working with you guys' staff, gone through several red lines to make sure that we brought forth a good product to you guys. So.
All right, any questions for the applicant, Commissioner Hatch?
Oh, sorry.
Oh, all right. I thought you were beating me to it. Any questions for the applicant? All right, I think we'll call you back up if anything else comes up. Taylor, fill us in on the dis- on the uh, city side.
Great, thank you, Chair. Um, so Taylor kind of talked about the basics, what we're seeing here, but just wanna give you a little bit context. So we can see the location here outlined in red. Uh, future land use map does designate this as a neighborhood commercial parcel. Uh, and our zoning map is currently zoned SC one, as we talked about. Uh, that region has done approximately two thousand and thirteen, so it's been that way for um, going on ten years now. It's located next to the R one eight subdivision and the eighty-six hundred south layover is being constructed um, just to the south and west of this property. Uh, so the first application is a plat to divide the uh, property into two parcels rather than the one. Lot one, which should be located to the north, is uh, forty-three thousand five hundred and sixty square feet, so it's exactly one acre which is the minimum lot size for the SC two zone. Lot two is a little bit bigger at seventy-three thousand square feet. Uh, kind of a unique aspect about this, cause we'll talk about it in the site plan, so just kidding. Here's the site plan for the coming go that we're looking at. Um, it'd be on lot two as mentioned. Uh, the interesting thing is uh, both fifty-six hundred south and uh, eighty-six fifty-six hundred west and eighty-six hundred south are collector roads. And that means the applicant only have right and right out access onto each of those. So it's what they're doing is they're having a shared access easement between the two lots, so that um, you come in on, so it's fifty-six hundred west, turning in right, even then turn right out on um, eighty-six hundred south. So they do have that shared access. Um, getting those access points as far away from intersection was a big concern that we worked. Um, they're both collector roads. They're gonna have high levels of traffic, so we wanted to make sure we had as much separation there. Uh, the applicant did complete a traffic impact study and it did show that the roads would at operate at a level, an acceptable level of service after this project comes in. We did take these elevations to the DRC and it's been a couple of months now. But they did recommend approval of the elevations. They are four sided architecture. Um, these different colors, lots of pop outs and different planes. They're not any flat uh, featureless walls. Uh, the property said north is on R one eight to the south, although it's unbuilt, is uh, some heightened residential. We have some R one eight to the west and to the east is R one twelve. Based on the uh, analysis staff that's done, we're recommending approval of both the preliminary uh, subdivision plat and the site plan. Uh, with that, happy to answer the questions you might have.
Uh, is this anticipated to be one motion or two?
Uh, I think it's written as two motions in the staff report and get two motions here.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Commissioner Shelton?
Yes, this may not be relevant to this. In fact, it's probably not relevant to the site plan. Um, I'm just wondering if the city is planning on any additional safety precautions for high school students that'll be crossing two major roads to get to this. Um, I'm sure it's not even, I apologize if it's not, but it just came to my mind and I wanted to ask.
Uh, so at the intersection of eighty-six hundred and fifty-six hundred, that will be a signal, so we'll have crosswalks at that location. It'll probably be the best and safest way for us.
Mm-hmm, thank you.
I, I think that's an excellent question. It is a signal there currently. Uh, there's students that commute from that development over the walk over to that school, so they're doing it so far, so good. We'll see if it continues. Commissioner Lynn?
What is proposed for lot one?
We've received no application for lot one, so we don't know. It'll be a commercial use at some point in the future.
Yeah, and I think you just answered my second question a minute ago. For the properties south of the overpass, I think I saw SC two on that. So what's is projected there?
Yeah, so the uh, kind of the cross hash just on the other side is first, some heightened residential and then it'd be after the heightened residential, then there's some commercial property there. I believe that's, there's no applications for that at this time.
Thank you.
All right, any further questions? Okay, this has been noticed as a uh, public Okay, this has been noticed as a uh, public hearing. And so the time is being open to the public, you'll have three minutes to speak on this item, please feel free to come up to the podium, state your name for the record. And then uh, feel free to discuss uh, or uh, make your statement, excuse me. During the time that you're making the statement, uh, I feel free to ask questions and and uh, talk through it. But the planning commission or staff will respond to any of those questions during that point in time. We'll go through the entire uh, public hearing and then uh, we'll talk amongst ourselves afterward. Uh, if anybody's online, feel free to raise your hand to address this item as well, we'll call on you at which point you can unmute. Uh, so time is now yours.
Hi, I'm Lori Shennafell and I'm a resident.
Did you pull the microphone down? Thank you very much.
Don't push, oh, I can hear myself, so that's good. Um, I'm just here to ask you guys to really listen to your residents, because I do have some concerns. With that gas station being built there. Um, I knew it was owned for commercial, but I didn't realize it was gonna be a gas station. And um, and being so close to Copper Hills High School as well. Um, my biggest concerns are um, lighting, because there are gonna be a forty foot sign, because. That's gonna be really hard for the toddlers that actually live right there behind. That will, the gas station will be their backyard. Um, and then I also am concerned about a wall, like we only have a six foot wall right now. And if the gas station gets knocked on with, um, gets robbed or anything like, it's gonna be easy to. Jump a six foot fence versus an eight foot fence, and so I would like some privacy for our neighbors and for me and. Not have a forty foot sign looking outside my backyard. I just hope we have some control over what's gonna be there and how it's gonna be, so. Those are my concerns and those are just my questions on if there's gonna be a wall and how big the sign's gonna be and if it's gonna be open twenty four seven and. Things like that, so.
Thank you. Alright. I, I don't see the names. Shelley Reed, uh, feel free to unmute and uh, address the planning commission.
Hello, Planning Commission, my name is Shelley Reed, uh, John is on his way here to join us, but not quite here yet, my husband. Um, we did send in some uh, public comments to be read. Um, of our concerns, we are in lot three O two, which is west of this, right behind it. Um, the corner lots two O, three O two and three O three, we are at three O two. Um, I, we have a lot of concerns, um, the lighting. I know the Maverick just a quarter of a mile down the street is lit up like a Christmas tree at night. Um, the entrance, um, coming in off of fifty six hundred west. When people turn into that, the lights are gonna go right into our bedroom and living room. Um, so we're really concerned about all the lighting and where the, the placement of the light posts. That are along our property line. We have concerns of the noise, I know Maverick now owns Come and Go. Um, and every time someone puts gas in their car, they play the music. So we're concerned with the lighting, the music. Um, my husband is concerned of the placement of the underground fuel tanks that are right up against the. Lots three O two and three O, I guess, three O. One or three O three, whichever's next to us that's directly behind the come and go. Um, so those are major concerns, we're. Asking to have a higher fence on your property and more landscaping, maybe move the landscaping that you have proposed. In the back of the building, move to the side and the front of the building and have a fence along. The north end of the, your come and go plot. With more landscaping.
Alright, is, is that the end of the comment?
Yeah, that we're just helping for something to, but for the noise and the lights with uh, fencing and landscaping.
Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Amanda Phelps and I live in Copper Valley Estates, I'm a business owner here in West Jordan. And um, I'm very concerned about the additional traffic that this may. Create at the intersection of Old Bingham Highway and fifty six hundred west. I live currently um, at the corner, I'm the first house on the left when you turn into Copper Valley Estates. So right on Annie Lane. There are already several accidents there because of the backup of traffic that happens, particularly when school is in session. At incoming and outgoing at the high school, lots of kids driving to and from school. And I see a great problem with the increase in traffic, they may have done their study, but I don't trust it. Um, in addition to that, they are directly uh, accessible. By the high school to uh, for the kids, um, for accessing. Alcohol, I'm very concerned about that, um. And I'm not even an anti alcohol person, I just think that it shouldn't be easily accessible to children. I think we have a Maverick half a mile to the south. We've got a Maverick half a mile to the north, we've got a Smith's gas station half a mile to the north. I just don't see the need for this bill, for this business in this community, and I don't wanna see it at all, I don't care about the lighting, I don't care about. Any of it, I don't wanna see it, so thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Can you hear me okay?
Uh, just a moment, we'll get to you.
Can you hear me okay?
Uh, yes, go ahead, sir. Alright, we'll hold up for a second, you go ahead, please.
Thank you very much, my name is John Chops, and I actually live in the same house as Amanda. Um, so I'm right there on any plane. And I've heard the comments that they've made and I agree with them, and I'm really gonna go into some of the traffic issues that we have there, they are significant. We have some, as a matter of fact, some significant blind spots, they're trying to turn on to fifty six from. Our only entrance into our subdivision because of the West Jordan trees that have not grown out, so they're blocking all of our view. There are accidents there, there are kids that are walking. To and from school, from not just the high school, but down the street, there's the, I guess it's an elementary school. Um, and then I heard the comments about the light, which I absolutely agree with, it's gonna be lit up, those houses are gonna suck. It's gonna kill those houses. The last thing is, it wasn't Brian, I don't know what y'all call these cars, I call them fart boxes, you know? And they, they use fifty six as a drag strip. So it's bad enough now. That they're pulling down fifty six without a cop in sight. Waking us up because they're so damn loud, and now you're gonna put a gas station next to my house where they will congregate. And so it's not just gonna be them going by, it's gonna be them pulling in. And these guys are gonna have to listen to it because their. Bedroom window is next to the car. This is a really, really bad idea, put something else there. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Alright, returning to online, what is the name of the individual?
Uh, Jeremy Dreadford.
Alright, go ahead, sir.
Yeah, I live in lot three twenty one and I have to agree with the rest of my neighbors here, I think this is a bad move, I think it's duplicitous. I think we have an overabundance of gas stations already. When I built my house out here, I built it because I wanted to be away from all of this. Um, I was not in the impression that this was gonna be put here, if so, I would have probably moved and built my home somewhere else. Um, just like everything else, I don't want, I don't wanna hear the lighting, the increased traffic. And I feel bad for my neighbors where they're gonna look at their backyard and they're gonna see a gas station all lit up like Maverick. Um, I think it's unfair for them to have to, to deal with that, but the noise, the traffic. Um, I really don't wanna deal with it either, and I really don't wanna see that in my backyard. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Appreciate your time. Okay, alright. We'll, we'll give three, two, one, alright. I appreciate everybody's comments, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing portion of this agenda item. And bring it back to the planning commission, been taking notes and I wanted to uh, maybe run through these really quick with some feedback from staff. I appreciate it, uh, before we jump into that, one of the things I want to uh, clarify. And this is always a difficult thing on a planning commission side. We're not a city council, uh, planning commission is, is very exact, we've got a certain set of criteria. If the application meets those criteria, we're obligated to approve it. Now that said, the criteria includes things such as health and wellness, uh, safety, some of those items. And so we have communications with uh, with the staff to make sure that we are considering all of these appropriately and. Of course, addressing them appropriately, and, and in some cases, we might be able to put conditions in place. Uh, that mitigate those, and which case we're, we're, we're able to do that as part of our ruling. Uh, so with that said, going through some of the comments that I had, and Taylor, thank you for also taking comments, if I missed any, uh, let me know. Uh, we heard a lot about lighting, there was a lighting study done.
Yeah, so we did have a, a photometric study done, this is what we can see here on the map, I know it's a little bit hard to see, so. I've kind of pulled out the, the measures along the property line and load them up over here to the side. But it's what this does, it measures the lumens at a foot candle, a volume at, as you move away from the light, so as you can see here next to. Um, island, the pumping island, the, those lumens are, you know, twenty nine lumens, but as we get down to the property line. We're actually at zero lumens, so it's what that's saying is lights are going to be directionally facing down. And the, the light sheets, we've been given the spec sheets. Um, that's something that's reviewed by lighting engineers and then they have a independent engineer that comes up with this uh, photometric plan and they're showing that that light trespasses. Will not be over the property lines, that is something that we required, so that's what this photometric plan is showing.
I think it's, it's important to note, I've been involved in a handful of these, uh, clarify where I go wrong, of course. Just because there's a zero on the property line, people are gonna be able to stand on that property, look over and foresee the lights shining down, we'll see if the, the illumination. But being on the property itself, property won't be illuminated. Okay. Go ahead, Commissioner Hatch.
May I interrupt, Chair? Um, mention of the sign that obviously will be illuminated, um, what is the height requirement of that sign?
Yeah, so we're not approving any sign with this, actually, they'd have to go through a sign permit, um. I, I'm not sure exactly, maybe.
Could you please come to the podium and actually read me to suspend the rules, so never mind, we'll do this after.
We, we did indicate that we could invite him back up during the discussion, so please feel free to just come up and let us know, I, I think I see it right there.
Yeah, thank you, all the public comments, those are all very valid concerns and understand them, and we wanna take those in consideration in everything we do. So we are planning for a six foot monument sign, so kind of the basic ones you see now, um, it'll have display our gas prices. And it's LED light with just the gas prices and the come and go logo on top, very minimal lights. And as, and on the top of the entrance there, you can kind of see that little rectangular box, I don't know if you can circle that, Taylor? Yep, right there, and then there's gonna be one down at the intersection, kind of at that last parking stall on the right. And those will be the only, and they're both six foot monument signs, so no pole signs, no huge extravagant signs, nothing like that, and so. And because we are next to residential, there are standards, the Maverick down the street, not next to residential, so let's make it look like Vegas. And us can't really do that with the restrictions we have, and we wanna be good neighbors, so we made sure to make. Um, follow, we work closely with Taylor and his staff to make sure that we can try to make sure people know we're there. Make sure the residents aren't blinded, so.
Appreciate the clarification, I was just sitting right there. Uh, Taylor, just for clarification, monument sign, six foot, is that a staff level, that doesn't have to come back to us, right?
Correct.
Okay.
I have an additional question about this sign.
Please, go ahead.
Is, you said it's six foot, does that mean it's six feet tall or six feet wide? Six feet square?
Yeah, tall, and they're usually about two and a half, three feet wide, and then it's just like.
Answering to the mic.
Yeah, sorry, yeah, so six feet tall, they're usually about two and a half to three foot wide, and then um, about six to eight feet long, like this way.
And they're backlit?
Uh, LED light, yeah.
So from behind, like.
Uh, so it's a, so the, what prices, like on the intersection one, there'll be prices on both sides and stuff like that.
The light comes out from the sign, not onto the sign.
Yep, so and um, also in the photometric plan, that's incorporated into how far that line, light will go out.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, of course.
Commissioner Richardson, do you have comment regarding the lighting?
Yes, um. I am sympathetic to the residents who complained about the lighting, the light because. I do, I also live someplace, the, the, the shopping center is a little farther from my house than you guys, but. I remember when it went up, it was like, oh my gosh, because it was right in your face, even though I'm, I'm. So I'm probably about half a mile away from it. Um, and it's a, it's a car wash and it's pretty noisy. Um, I'm concerned that uh, the light is troublesome. Um, and there's no landscaping, you know, to protect the residents from it. But I'm really concerned about the fact that it's next to the uh, high school. And just thousands of it, they're going to be building high density. Um, you're just asking for it to be a conga, a place where kids can congregate. And cause trouble. Cause noise. And um, although. I like the design, I mean, you know, I thought it would be, would be kind of a good idea until I heard from the residents. We have to be concerned about our residents, it isn't fair for them to have the noise. The high school close by with, you know, because I know kids, we all know kids. And they will congregate there, perhaps. And um, I just don't think it's fair to the residents there, and also because of that high density that's going in. It, we're asking for trouble. Thank you.
Scott, go ahead. If I could, Chair, um, I think this will be helpful, um, for, for the people uh, that live in the neighborhood. And you already alluded to this fact that the planning commission, um, your, your uh, authority. Is, is pretty, pretty defined when it, when it comes to site plan, uh, review and approval. Um, a lot of concerns are coming up tonight about the use of the property. The property owner uh, has a legal right to use this as, as a convenience gas station, convenience store. Uh, it's, it's permitted, and so, uh. While a lot of the, the, the comments here tonight have been spot on about mitigating impacts of this permitted use. Um, the, the commission needs to be focused in on that and not use itself. I agree, and I appreciate that, uh, sorry, public hearing portion has been closed, feel, uh, please, uh, Taylor is a great person to talk to. You're right there, right after the meeting, grab him, he can answer any questions.
Uh, just to follow up if I could, Chair, that's just Scott's comments that. Yeah, as, as he indicated, it's a permitted use, it's not a conditional use, and if it was a conditional use, then we would look at those, uh. You know, ways to mitigate those, um. Those items that, uh, you know, have been mentioned, but. those items that uh, you know, have been mentioned, but there's no ability to impose conditions in this situation where it's not a conditionally, it's you, the only applications before you are a subdivision plan and preliminary site plans, so uh the focus of your discussion should focus on is there anything that does not meet those uh uh what's required in the city code for those applications?
Along those lines, perhaps it would be helpful for the commission and the and the the residents here to know what what is required as far as landscaping and wall height and those types of things, so.
Yeah, and I can go into that.
Yep, that would be fantastic, great segue.
Okay, thank you, Chair, um, so I'm gonna go kind of through the list and uh do kind of what we've reviewed as staff, and kind of the response, how we like we've addressed those, and if there's more questions, then maybe we jump in at one point rather than multiple. Um, so we've talked about the lighting and science, the next concern we heard was walls. Uh, our code does require with um commercial next to a less intense residential, that they'll have to do a six-foot masonry wall. So that would be required along with the come and go, wherever that borders the residents, what lot one develops north of it, they'll have to do that same thing um at that point, once that develops. Um, there was a concern about the entrance and kind of those elevations, as we wanted to address that as well. Um, this, what we're seeing here is from the grading plan. Uh, here, where we access off of fifty-six hundred, we can see the finished grade right here is four thousand eight hundred thirty-two feet. Uh, the property generally slopes up as we move to the west, and so here we have four thousand eight hundred thirty-eight feet, that's a six-foot difference of this green line. This red line, which we're seeing here is four thousand eight hundred thirty-nine feet, so that's the finished grade, it's almost seven feet higher than the entrance point, and then there's that six-foot wall which will be built at grade, there's already a uh fence there at this time, it's like it's a vinyl fence, so when the development of lot one happens, they'd build that six-foot masonry wall there. Um, so those are some of the things that we do want to, you know, mitigate those real concerns, we feel like uh that does a good job of making sure the whole slides that people come in are going to be blocked. Okay, now, um, if it's something that uh the commission is concerned with, we can work with the applicant and see what we can do about getting more landscaping along those property lines, I know the applicant has already um been working with us on making sure that all that property along eighty-six hundred is a landscape, and normally that park strips, you know, four or five feet tall, I think, or four or five feet wide, I think in this location, it's thirty-five to forty feet wide in some locations, so they're already putting in a lot of landscaping there, I'm sure we can work with them to uh move some of that potentially uh next to these residential properties. Um, concerned with noise. Uh, all noise ordinance would fall under the Salt Lake County noise ordinance, there's the location exceeds that, then uh there's appropriate, they need to take uh action, that would be through our code enforcement. Um, there was a concern about the fuel location. Um, we'll talk on that. This pump right here, so we can see that the structure in the SC one zone, we have a setback of twenty feet from residential properties. So they are over that twenty-foot setback. It is also worth noting that this was reviewed by our utility engineer, our public works engineer, and the fire department. Um, they'll have to build that to code, and we'll let you get up in a minute. Uh, as we talked about the fence, talked about the landscaping, um traffic, we mentioned there's a traffic impact study, our traffic engineer also reviewed that, he didn't have concerns with what that traffic study came up with. And finally, there was concern about alcohol, um, that's regulated through the state of Utah. They need to go through the state before they get a business license from us. Um, I think the distance is five or six hundred feet, they exceed that, I believe it's about nine hundred feet as a pedestrian walk from the door to the door, which is where they measure, so if they go through those proper channels with the state, that would be something that would be permitted. Um, I think I got all the questions, uh, the last one, I think Scott and Duncan are tough on, but this is a permitted use, so um, the land use, that question has been answered in most senses. Um, with that, I know the applicant's name, like he has some stuff he wants to jump in, but I'm also having some questions in my house.
I wanted to. Yeah, so let me, let me mention that, so the the two remaining ones that I heard that I just wanted to bring up was, one, the trees and blind spots, and two, the the dragging, drag racing up and down fifty-six hundred west, and and sound in general. Uh, both of those would be best addressed by contacting the city council member in your area and chatting with them. It all falls under the Salt Lake County ordinance, and so as long as they're maintaining a certain decimal rating during the hours associated with that, then it's gonna be permitted. Uh, really, the only way around that is if you're finding there is noise late at night that exceeds that amount that uh you would be able to contact and the uh police department, essentially. And Paulie, you gotta.
Yes, um, I, e- even though it says now, it's and it's me. Um, if I remember correctly, yeah, in in the review, the the underground fuel tanks will be uh parallel along eighty-six hundred south, it's not gonna be near the home, so it's it's quite a ways away from them, so just so you're aware.
Go ahead, Commissioner Thomas, and Commissioner Richardson.
Um, Paul, you can remind the um people here too, that all of the fuel has to be contained by a secondary containment, so there's no chance of a spill. So if that's one of the concerns, that's definitely, that's been taken care of, and that's code-driven, so there's nothing they have to follow that, so, thank you.
Okay, my comment is, um, I don't think that adequately provides criteria B, which is uh public streets and highways, has adequate public streets and highways to carry the type and quality of traffic which may be generated by subject use. And that proposed vehicular and pedestrian circulation is adequate to permit movement in a matter which is safe and efficient. Um there's been accidents around that area already without this business there, and um there's gonna be more, a lot more. Um, the cars just jamming down the street, I have that in my residence also. On seventy-eight hundred and fifty-six hundred, always seems to be like around three AM, okay, once again, it's a city council issue. But I just wanna let you guys know that it does, it's because um of criteria B, well, I don't think there's enough um um, public adequate access, and especially in the future, when you have the high density there, I don't know how high it's gonna be, but it's gonna be significant, significant, including the the ch- the uh high school students, so I would be voting no on this.
So, what is, what is your opinion based upon? Is it just an opinion, is a traffic study does not agree with your opinion?
Well.
Yeah, so I'm concerned that you're, you're putting a negative onto the application, that it's not I don't want that to be reflected by the rest of the planning commission, is what I'm saying.
You know, I don't really wanna be against the applicant, you know, truthfully, uh maybe another thing that you can do is flip the uh the the uh gas station to be on the side of, what is that? You know, on the other side, instead of being in the middle of the subdivision, maybe put it along the side.
But how would that mitigate the traffic issues you just brought up?
It would not, okay, I I that, I didn't say to do that to mitigate, I I think to, I think the traffic issue is prevalent, it is there, and um I'm just suggesting that that would be another thing, that's a whole separate issue, flipping it the building with the um the gas stations. But mostly, I'm concerned that there's not enough access to um pedestrians or to the vehicular traffic. And it's gonna get worse, not better, and it's gonna be a horrible intersection for residents. And we must be concerned about our residents. You know, it it is gonna decrease their property values, especially the ones that are up close to it, so.
That is not true.
Um, it is, if you own one of their homes.
Object to this, this, this is, um, we're making an inflammatory statements, and I I have to object.
Okay, well, I'm standing by my statements. I think it will reduce their um property values, and I think that we should be concerned as as planning commissioners about the residents. Thank you.
Right, Commissioner Lynn.
Oh, I would like to hear the staff address uh sites, plan criteria. Criteria B. Which says a proposed site and all the plans, building heights, building locations, access points, topography and mar- and parking areas will not negatively affect negative impact adjacent properties or the surrounding neighborhood. I'm 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 um seeing some conflict there, helping with that.
Yeah, so that that's a good question, thank you, Chair, or not Chair, Commissioner, when, when we look at projects, when they come in um, staffs much like you, we're we're not elected officials, we don't have discretion, we have to go by what's in the code, and so as a permitted use, we look at the development standards and the ordinance. So when we look at the SC one ordinance, that is a legislative decision that has been made uh deeming that to be inappropriate use of the location, so at that point, we look to make sure they're complying with those standards that have been adopted by the council through legislative action. And so when we say we don't find it to be in conflict is because they need all of the development standards for setbacks, heights, parking uh building orientation, building appearance, all of those things meet the development standards, and uh because it means those development standards which were adopted through ordinance, we as staff are required, not only uh not as their purview, it's our requirement to uh find it to be uh compliant.
So, so you're saying that the, that 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 this is not a subjective statement, criteria B is not a subjective uh statement about the development or the proposal. It's a reasonably objective statement about meeting the criteria.
As my belief, yes.
Taylor, could you forward to the, where you have the motions? Commission, this is uh what's before us today, uh, any further comments or emotion, Commissioner Thomas?
If there's no other uh comments, I'll go ahead and make the motions. And just reminding that we do have an obligation under code, because we do not create code, we just have to enforce it, so with that being said, um, I move that the planning commission approves preliminary major subdivision subdivision plan for fifty-six hundred west, Kraus Crossing. Number two lot on approximately two point four oh acres, located at eighty-five, fifty-four south, fifty-six hundred west. With the requirements of approval listed in this report.
Commissioner Hatch.
I'll second that motion.
We have motion for Commissioner Thomas, second, Commissioner Hatch, any discussion of the motion? Alright, all in favor? Opposed? Okay, we have uh we're missing a guy, that just threw me entirely off. Five in favor with one dissenting uh being Commissioner.
Could I ask Commissioner Richardson, on what grounds are you not supporting this?
Um, I stated that it, I don't believe it meets criteria, what was it? Criteria B, the proposed site has adequate access to public streets and highways to carry the type and quantity of traffic which may be generated by the subject use. And that proposed vehicular and pedestrian circulation is adequate to permit movement in a matter which is safe and efficient.
So it does not have enough access, or it has too much access?
Um it does not have enough.
So would you, would you like more streets, more access in and off of major arterial streets, or?
I don't, I think the lot is too small to accommodate a business that's gonna have so much traffic going in and out.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, Commissioner Thomas?
Go ahead and for the second motion. I move that the planning commission approves preliminary site plan for Come and Go, located at approximately located on approximately one point four oh acres at eighty-five, fifty-four south, fifty-six hundred west. In the SC one neighborhood shopping center zone with requirements of approval listed in the report.
Commissioner Hatch.
I'll second.
Right, uh, motion by Commissioner Thomas, second by Commissioner Hatch, all in favor?
I.
All opposed?
I oppose.
Alright, that's five in favor with Commissioner Richardson opposed, motion carries. Hey, next item on the agenda is the Woods Ranch Platte two subdivision located at seventy-four hundred south, SR one eleven. A preliminary subdivision plant, one hundred fifty-four residential and two commercial lots and thirty-five point three five two acres. And sub-area development plan, uh PCH MDA zone with third cadence Gary Langston applicant.
Things still on, yep, good morning, or good evening, Commissioners, I I'm Gary Langston with Third Cadence. We're the master developer for the Wood Ranch Development. Excited to bring our second plat for you, we're actively under construction on uh doing mass grading uh of about a hundred acres in Wood Ranch, and then we'll start subdivision improvements for plat one. Plat two is really the inventory lots for each of our builders. And uh it's proposed to deliver approximately a hundred and fifty lots on about thirty-five acres, which obviously includes the roads and the open space and what have you. It's, we're delivering uh the majority of our segments, we're still withholding our smallest townhome segment and our two largest segments as well as our apartment project, uh this uh this plat also includes um what we're calling the base camp, which is where our amenities for the residents would be, uh including the bistro, which is one of the things that we have to pro- provide as a part of the our development agreement, which is about a three thousand square foot. Um, food and beverage service location, it will also serve as our welcome center for sales and getting people generally uh familiarized with the community and what we have to offer. Which would be anywhere from what the the community itself has in terms of open space, trails, network, so on, and information about the builders, and generally orienting people to who they should go visit, depending on their price points, square footage, et cetera. I know you have a lot of information about this, I'm happy to answer any questions, but uh I think that's all I have to share with you at this point.
Thank you, uh, questions for the applicant, Commissioner Richardson, are you still?
Oh.
Just wanted to make sure, Commissioner Shelton.
I have a question, and this is diving in real deep, I'm sorry, but um I um, I was, I'm on the uh design review committee, and we discussed the roof of the bistro quite extensively in the design review committee meeting, and our concern was in that meeting that the roof has access from the trail. Like people could just walk right onto the roof of that from the trail. And so we were concerned that if it became a problem, that there might be a fence put up there, and the view from the bistro itself might become obstructed by a fence or something that wouldn't we're just concerned about the logistics of that of that uh roof, and and is it meant to have access, or?
So, uh, we agree with your concern, um, if you look at the grading plan. The trail at that location is several feet above, so so there's a sloping condition coming down off the trail. The roof itself is generally flat, and we've talked about providing some sort of barrier that would be on the top of that wall, similar to a handrail that you would see uh on an edge condition. Uh, we think that that in combination with some plantings, uh whether it's something like roses, or just something that prohibits.
Something with horns.
Yeah, something that's a little painful to walk through. Uh, so that that's how I think we mitigate um people getting on the roof, clearly, we don't want people um going at that location other than for maintenance reasons.
It's not, it's not intended to have people like picnicking up there.
Oh, it's not, okay.
Good, uh, thanks for addressing that.
Alright, any further questions?
Oh, that's a good question, um, so this is phase two, right?
Plus two, yep.
Um, is any of it built yet, the the first plan, the first plan one, or?
Under construction right now.
It's under construction, so you're just guessing.
We're doing mass grading work right now, utility work will hopefully start in the next four to six weeks.
Okay, I mean, planning is good. Um, I just wanna make a comment that uh I think it looks well thought out to me. Um, I like the idea of the different types of housing, so um I like it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll call you back. You got any further questions? Ray, I know you've been waiting all night for this one. I would appreciate it just on here if you point out where. Plat or Plan One is located. Uh, I think most of us were here, but.
Can you see this? The cursor? Yeah, yeah. Uh, Platte was was located in here. So the Platte two that we're looking at is. It's a little disjointed, but there's kind of reason for that. Um, in that some of the improvements will be installed as part of this phase, uh, opposed to Platte one. Uh, one of the things that they, so this is the the bistro site that we were talking about. Uh, I think at the last meeting, which is here, that there was some, oh, I'm sorry, it's here. And then um. I think as as part of that, there is um, uh, talk about moving the swimming pool down. In this area. Um, which may, uh, and I think, which I think it'd be a a good plan because I think it would dis- disperse or or distribute the traffic. And the parking and all that into two separate areas rather than have it all um, located into a single area, but. In terms of the number of units, there's going to be fifty townhomes and the rest of them are going to be single family units, so. Um, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Um, just one other thing is that the TDS, there will be some open space that will be. Dedicated to the city as part of uh, the subdivision plat approval.
All right, uh, questions for staff, Fisher, when?
If I understand correctly what's happening here. This will, uh, I'm reflecting back on a discussion we had several months ago about what we called the balanced housing ordinance. If I understand correctly, this will help. Keep us or move us into greater compliance with the balanced housing ordinance, is that correct?
There's the, there's a real variety of 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 units here. There's, I think it will. Um, you know, there's a a mix of townhomes and the overall and single family dwellings. Um, but I think it will move us in that direction because it it offers a variety of. Um, different types of units, different types of products or different income levels.
Well, the concern they had with the balanced housing ordinance is that we were way out of balance. In favor of apartments.
Right, and that's only, that only applies to, uh, well, it doesn't apply to areas that are within the planned community zone. So um. The, so. In these planned community zones, multifamily is allowed. Um, it it really doesn't apply, these areas are exempted from that, that code.
Other than there are limitations within the MDA itself, right? Because this is planning community. Hillside slash MBA zone, so.
All right, any further questions for staff? All right, this has been noticed as a public hearing, uh, last under this particular. The set, so if you're here to speak on this item, uh, feel free to come up. You have three minutes. Anybody online? If anybody's online, feel free to raise your hand. Okay, seeing no comment, we'll go ahead and close this portion of the public hearing. And return this item to the planning commission for the discussion or a motion. Ray, do you have the motion available up on the screen by chance? Uh, Commissioner Lynn?
I move that the planning commissioner approved preliminary major subdivision plat, preliminary sub area plan for Wood Ranch Platte two subdivision. Located on approximately thirty five point three five two acres. At seven hundred seventy four hundred south and state road one eleven. With the conditions and requirements of approval listed in this report.
And Commissioner Richardson?
I'll second it.
All right, we've got a motion, Fisher, when, second from Commissioner Richardson. Any further discussion on the motion? All right, uh, all in favor? I. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Okay, final item on tonight's agenda is a public hearing with planning commission recommendations to city council for final action, and that is the Villas Stone Creek subdivision. This is located at forty nine seventy seven west, seventy eight hundred south, a preliminary subdivision plant. Preliminary site plan, final development plan and road vacation in a PC zone. With Peterson Development as the applicant. Please, uh, I I'm assuming, I'm looking around, it's like, okay, you win. Feel free, share with us your uh, your name and your application.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Justin Peterson with Peterson Development. Um, yeah, I'm uh. Excited to be here for really the last substantive phase of uh. I don't want to overstate it, the the grand experiment between uh, uh, West Jordan City and the and Peterson Development at the time, at least in nineteen ninety nine when this was approved. The city processed by way of a little background, uh. They saw us assembling some ground and said, hey, are you open to the idea of doing a a planned community? And uh, we we listened and uh, we 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 liked what we heard. Um, it just seemed to make sense. And here we are, this represents the last phase, uh, at least of the residential. Nine hundred sixty five units, I think, uh, spread out over the three hundred acres, not incredibly dense, but a mix of housing types. Um, there is uh, already a a senior component in there in the ranches. This will also be a senior component, that's probably reflective as much of our of our baby boomer demographics and uh, the overhang quickly. Approaching uh, here, I think twenty twenty five is when that peaks. Um, and we've done this product uh, in in South Jordan a couple times, we're doing one in Heber and uh, we've wanted to do this in West Jordan now for years and this. This piece uh. Made the most sense and when it really opened up was when Albertsons, who owned the commercial piece here. Since two thousand one, they put it on the market and we were able to obtain it, so. We feel this is uh, the highest and best use and uh. And we're excited about the demographic and uh, the more minimal impact on the roads and the schools that that demographic represents. Uh, and really, uh, just uh, happy to try and answer any other questions about, uh, well, specifically about this project, any and any other questions about maybe the. Plans to meet the Stone Creek by community.
Appreciate that. Any questions for the applicant? Commissioner Shelton?
I'm curious about the uh, road vacation, can you uh, get into that a little bit? Yeah. What, why that makes sense?
My understanding with the uh, Albertsons, uh, there was a plat recorded with commercial zoning and. Uh, my dates could be wrong, two thousand one possibly, and I think there were some requirements to put in some improvements. Um, at that time. Uh, I'm I'm a little foggy on whether that was us, the developer, or whether Albertson put those in, but with the commercial. Zoning, at least uh, the anchor of Albertson's going away, I I believe that uh. Uh, release of that dedication or the uh. Vacation of that, uh, that's some of the background for it, but legal. And planners may have more context than than I do, but that's how I understand it and its history.
All right, Commissioner Richardson?
So does that mean that the vacation road is vacated? In other words. It's not going, it's not going to be dedicated to some road or something.
Yeah, was that a question for legal or staff? Was that, was that dedicated to the city and now it's being reclaimed or?
Yes, so uh, sounds like from talking to Larry Gardner here, the. Main city planner, that that was dedicated to the city, it's going to be vacated now, basically means undoing the dedication. Typically, if there's no. Public utilities, and my understanding is there's no public utilities, water lines, sewer lines, et cetera, in the road. In the what was going to be a road. Then that's a fairly easy process, it's still has to go to the council with a public hearing, so. That's the one part that technically you're not making a recommendation on, um, but the council will. Complete that process under state code when these other uh, applications come to them, but. Yeah, they'll basically undo, we call it vacating the uh, dedication. The reason we have a public hearing, the reason sometimes the vacation process i- is a little bit more complicated is if there's already been. Water lines or sewer lines placed there because then we need to make sure, especially if it's. A utility line that's not owned by the city, then we need to have their approval, we need to make sure we're not taking away services currently being used. Uh, but where those aren't issues, it's pretty much a. Simple process, but we just have to jump through the hoops and it has to be the. Council after a public hearing that does it, but they're going to hold a public hearing on these other applications, hear them all at the same time anyway, so.
Thank you, we'll bring you back up if there's any further questions.
Okay, thank you.
Ray, walk us through it.
Okay, um. Really, since you saw this last, the last time, there have been no changes to this, um, to the, to the layout or configuration or the number of lots. Number of units, uh, since when you saw the last go around, just in pointing out the location of that. Um, the road is, it's like right in here, the arrow is. And it just goes into the the property, it's never been developed, it's just a, it exists on paper. So that's, that's why we need to go through uh, a formal. Process through the city council to to get the thing vacated, so yours would be a recommendation to the vac- vacate that if you choose. Um, again, there's hundred sixteen units, there'll be eight single family homes that are along here, which provides a good. But um, we'd get transition between these and the the single family homes that are. Uh, to the west and then and then the uh, senior villas, but really is. It's just an attached product, um. And so we don't see that as there's been any issue, this phase two will be where the senior housing will be located, phase five will be a future. Uh, commercial pad site, so again, what you're looking at tonight is just a preliminary approval from the subdivision site plan. The uh, development plan that was included in your packets. Um, the examples that were included with that, uh, the sub area plan. I think showed some really tastefully designed buildings uh, for the commercial and the the residential. Components of this this development, so we really don't have any issues with that. And then also just the recommendation for the street closure. So with that, you have any questions?
Any questions for staff? So I'm I'm going to make a comment, but I, it's not a question, but I would like to hear your thoughts on it. Uh, back to that uh, plan that you had before. The, the uh. Way that this is set up now, uh, kids walking to school across forty hundred west, across the uh, crosswalk and then. Through essentially a field at this point now. Uh, the comment is that now they've got to cross forty eight hundred west and then Hayden Peak Drive, so there's going to be two connections, I. Not insurmountable, certainly just a matter of getting another crossing guard out there probably to cross the two. Uh. So I, that's the comment, it sounds like it was all looked at as part of the the overall site plan and direction. Um. Could you confirm that's the case?
That it, that is the case, um. There, there may be need for another crossing guard, um, our traffic engineers looked at this area. Um, he's, he's comfortable with what we've got. Uh, we will be putting in a a better light, right now there's no, no lights there, so. Um, early morning, late, late at night, there's, it's a dark area. Um. We don't plan at this time to put in a traffic light at at Hayden Peak Drive, so there will not be a a signalized intersection. Um, so whatever's there will either be. Um, a, just a, a school zone. Uh, for crossing, and I believe that's there now, but I'm not a hundred percent certain.
Yeah, okay. Yep. Okay, that sounds great, uh, sorry. Uh, well, we don't have, uh, it's, do we allow the mayor to make comment outside of public comment? All right, Mayor, go ahead.
Comment as an employee, not as a resident. So at that location, there is already a crossing guard.
There's already a crossing guard at that location. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Okay, this has been noticed as a public hearing, uh, so we will now open that portion of the the meeting. If you would like to discuss on this as a member of the public, feel free to come up to the podium. Or raise your hand online, you'll have three minutes to make your comment. And seeing none, we'll. Please, that way you're, we can get you up on the.
Sorry, normally I'll just sit in the back, um, I'm Andrew Hercules, I'm. Uh, sergeant currently over the crossing guards. I was curious where, what, what area are you wanting to put a crossing guard if this goes through?
Uh, there's already one that crosses forty eight hundred west.
Yes.
Uh, the the question was between forty eight hundred west and Hayden Peak. So right now, it's an empty field, you don't have to worry about crossing there. It's probably the same crossing guard that does both, because you're not going to stop both directions at the same time.
Right. Okay, I just didn't understand, so I just wanted to like maybe get a heads up way ahead of time, so, okay, cool, awesome, thanks.
That was a very informal public hearing, sorry about that. Uh, we'll go ahead and close the public uh, hearing portion of the meeting and bring it back to the. Commission for further discussion or motion, Fisher Richardson?
Uh, yes, I just want to say that um, I really like this um, plan. Um, I like, I like, I think it is the highest and best use, like you said. Um, I like the idea that you have uh, the eight single family homes as well as the townhomes. And um. Anyways, I just want to say thank you for for the whole, you know, Stone Creek Villas, um. Plan, I think it's great, thank you.
Would you like to carry that through into a motion?
Okay, let's see, the motion is um.
It's.
Oh, it's a fair, right. Based on the information and findings that were in this staff report and upon the evidence and explanations received today. I move that the planning commission approve the preliminary subdivision plat. Preliminary site plan and final development plan for the villas at Stone Creek Development. And forward a positive recommendation to the city council to approve an ordinance vacating Commerce Street.
All right, so Commissioner Lynn Shelton, I did not see which one of you posed first, you want to arm wrestle for him?
Uh, he looks way stronger than me.
Commissioner Shelton?
I'll second the motion.
All right, uh, motion from Fisher Richardson, second by Commissioner Shelton, any further discussion on the motion? All right, all in favor? I, any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Uh, that is the end of our meeting agenda. Commissioner Thomas?
Make a motion that we end the meeting.
We are adjourned.